Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled Mayor and Council meeting for the town of Berlin. It is Monday, January 23rd, 2023. Please join me in a moment of silence, followed by a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first item on our agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes from January 9th, 2023.
Uh, Mayor, I have a correction, um, minor correction under, under C, police chief report.
Okay.
Uh, the first sentence, Chief Duffin began his report by highlighting a thirty-five, uh, I think it's gonna be thirty-five thousand dollar grant, about a thirty-five dollar grant.
He's not here.
He's not here.
So, we'll shake that.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the table.
No, that's fine. And I think that we can cross-reference the, um, recording as well as...
It looks like it was just a zero, because it's a comma, thirty-five, comma, zero, zero, so I think it was just a zero.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve with that correction.
Thank you. So we have a motion for approval of the regular session minutes from January 9th, 2023, with the correction of the chief of police's report. And seconded by Councilmember Burrell, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Let the record reflect that the minutes passed unanimously with all council members present with the exception of Councilmember Nichols. All right, let's move on to Agenda Item Number Two, which is the public hearing on ordinance 2023-01, an amendment to Chapter 22 of the Town Code, Parks and Recreation, Article Three, Section 22-48, hours in Section 22-49, rules and regulations for Henry Park Basketball Court lighting hours, and our town administrator, Mary Bolden, is gonna run point on this.
Um, the main changes from the, from the first reading were that we did blank in for the time of the Stevenson Decatur Park tennis courts, based on the conversation that was had at last meeting. Um, so in the Section 22-48, Section One, the phrase "and including the hour of eleven o'clock PM" is struck. Then in the last sentence of that section, the hour of eleven PM is struck. Blanks are inserted for the time. Section Two is inserted in that section, reading the basketball courts located in the Dr. William Henry Park shall be permitted to be used after sunset up to blank PM. Any play on said courts after blank PM and prior to the sunrise shall be prohibited. Then in Section 22-49, number eight, Section D, the phrase "during the hours as set forth" in Section 22-48 is added.
Thank you. And we have a survey that was completed, and then we also had a Parks Commission meeting. What were the findings of those two events?
We received a total of five responses to the survey. Two responses were for eleven PM, two were for nine PM, one was for should not be lit or something to that effect. Those were the only responses that we received to the survey, when the Parks Commission met and discussed it. Their consensus was really nine PM would be fine if that's what the, the council chose to go with. It seems like nine PM seems to be a logical choice, based on what Tim produced as far as the hours, that the tennis court lights are actually in use as well.
Okay. And then, um, we'll open the public hearing?
Yes.
So we'll open the public hearing for ordinance 2023-01. Public hearing is now open. Anyone from the public that wishes to address the Mayor and Council, please come up to the, uh, presentation table and just state your name and where, uh, the, name and street name. Thank you. And Mike, if you want to state your title as the Parks Commission.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Wiley, Chairman, Berlin Parks Commission, resident at 317 Buttercup Court in Berlin. I did not get the feedback we usually get on something going on. I only had one person approach me. I talked to several of our members today, and they haven't heard much either, though I did have a couple people, I actually heard all three times, nine, ten, eleven, and there's no real majority on either. Like I said, it was very sporadic from what we've heard from the public, so. But normally we get a lot of stopped on Main Street. I get more information that way than any way you want to. So that's not all we've heard from the general public.
Thank you. So it spans from nine to eleven?
Yes, and a couple people did, or one or two did question why, why it couldn't be tall line, and they thought it wasn't an issue. I know Tim did some tests late, late, I think, didn't he?
Yep.
And I wonder how far the range went, but we haven't heard any real negative or real positive, just general comments about it.
So Mike, from the Parks Commission standpoint, um, nine o'clock was okay, but you weren't opposed to anything?
Weren't opposed to anything. They talked about nine. I always thought ten would have been a good compromise between the three times, but, uh, yeah. But I know Tim's report showed that there wasn't a lot of usage of the tennis courts after ten PM, I think, so, you know.
Nine, ten, I believe.
No, it wasn't.
Nine, six was the last.
Was it okay? That's, that's not all input we had from anyone.
Thank you, Mike. Does anybody else that's in attendance this evening wish to address the Mayor and Council? Just name and street name if you don't mind. There's no need to give a street number.
Yep.
Tony Lee, Bay Street.
So I'm just here to speak on behalf of the kids that I know who get off work around nine o'clock in the summertime and absolutely go play tennis at the tennis courts right up until eleven o'clock when it turns off. I can see them through the woods. I can hear them playing. I can hear my daughter hitting balls back and forth. Um, I know not everything electronic is perfect, so I don't think the report is totally complete. I know Jay sees people over there playing many nights of the week, well into the ten o'clock region, and I think changing Decatur Park would be an absolute mistake, because there are people that use it. The Decatur tennis team players, they sort of go over there in the evenings and play after they get off work. Um, and changing it would just be, I think, nonsensical. As far as Henry Park, um, same scenario, you're gonna have people that get off work at nine o'clock in the summer, they wanna go play basketball for a couple of, a couple of hours in the prime of beautiful weather. If you shut it off at nine, you're really gonna have no lights on during the summer, which sort of defeats the purpose of the lights. So I think we kept it the same, and it was eleven o'clock, you know, at both parks. And then, and looking into the future, if we ever have a skate park in this town, it'd be nice if the lights were kept on the same timeframe, in the same sort of thought process. Um, and that's my two cents on the lights.
Thank you. Any questions? And just come up, name and street name, please.
Gina Long, one seven four, truck at night. Um, I myself use the park lights a lot because I walk Lainey. Sometimes I can't get out there till late, so, you know, the park's really dark. I actually turn on one set of court lights because it really does illuminate most of the pathway, and you feel safer, because at that time of night, even at six o'clock, it's pretty dark out there, there's no one out there. So on a safety note, it's just nice. And then in the summer, I know I'm gonna be out there later, because I do enjoy the night walks, and Lainey is very heat sensitive, so I have to kind of switch the schedule around. So if you change the park lights out there, it really comes down to like a safety issue. Uh, for those of you who are just utilizing the path, I'm not really using the tennis courts, but I, I do like it, and it makes me feel safer.
Uh, Mayor, I do need to point out, technically the park closes at sunset, only the courts are open after that.
Yeah.
I'm just putting it out there.
She asked.
No, I, I totally realize that, and I'm not usually out there. But the thing is, at five-thirty, the sun's already set, and it's still pretty early in the winter, that's all, so. That's when it affects me the most, is the winter. Boston.
Just name and street.
My name is Jamie Burrell.
That wasn't self-incriminating at all?
I mean, just in what they've been saying, my wife and I had been discussing this about, about the parking device, so I'm in the process of trying to build a home right next door to Henry Park. Um, during the discussion with my wife, I have grandchildren, and when they come to visit me in Berlin, I would like for them to have somewhere they could go and play that I would feel safe about. And if they was in that park playing basketball until nine, ten o'clock at night, I would feel, feel more safer for them to be doing that than anywhere else. So I'm in favor of the lights staying on at least until ten o'clock. So that, that's how I feel about it, okay?
And you think, do you live directly next door currently, or are looking to build a house?
No, we are building it right now, yes, sir.
Um, do you believe that having the lights on as late as eleven PM would impact your home negatively?
I think that I could deal with it. Governor's office, you know, I don't think that it's gonna be that noisy or that much light that it's gonna be an impact on me. Um, I would be fine with that.
Thank you. Were you one of the members that completed the survey?
No, sir, I was not.
So you would be in the, so if we had two that were in, um, the eleven o'clock timeframe, I think we had two that were in nine o'clock, and then one that was, don't turn them on at all? So would you lean more toward the eleven or the nine?
Let's try eleven, because if something was to be, um, we found that it didn't work, the town could always come back from it. So I'd go with eleven.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing.
Thank you.
Sir, you had this on the floor.
Oh, you dropped it.
You married in violation. I see you there before.
Don't pull a Gina Ball.
I know, right? Wait, I put my foot in my mouth.
You need to start walking with a tennis racket.
Mary Hidlaski, Westminster Drive, and I just wanna say, I would like to see him stay on as late as we can, probably like eleven o'clock. Just because, like, even if we do like a winter time and a summer time, just because the kids, like, between twelve and eighteen, we've got parks for the little kids and stuff like that, but right now we really don't have a lot of options for twelve to eighteen-year-olds, and this would be a great option for them. And I know that Tim was saying, like, the tennis courts, they're not used that much, but they're, I mean, twelve to eighteen-year-old kids, they're up in the summer time, ten or eleven o'clock, whereas the adults are not playing tennis at that time. But I just, I don't know, I just think it would be a good option, and then if it's a problem, we can change it. But just, just see, you know, as late as we can.
Okay.
And I'm not walking early in the morning, matter what you say.
I know, right?
Here's, uh, Council's agreement.
Yeah, I never saw anything like that.
I didn't see that before. He's a wild. He's a road trash. He's a road trash. He's a road trash. He's a street sweeper out and going everywhere. He's a winter owl.
The tennis courts have been at eleven o'clock forever. I, I mean, it was never, it's been that way for as long as I can remember, and that's, that's a couple years. Um, you don't need to do anything to the tennis court lights, that could be left as is. So it was just something in the last discussion that you had talked about making them consistent together. You can set the time, and, and then if there is a, a significant pushback, we can always adjust them later.
Yeah.
Is there anybody else for the public hearing that would like to address the Mayor and Council? Okay, if not, we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll entertain any discussion by the Council or anybody that would like to play fill in the blank.
I have a question for Tim, if I could. Tim, um, I saw the pictures you sent of the lights lit up on the court, and it didn't look like the light extended much beyond the actual court itself. Is that true?
That is correct. Uh, most of the light is directional light, like, straight down to the court. You get a little bit on the outside of the court, maybe fifteen feet or so, but it, it won't impact the townhouse development. I mean, I actually walked over there just to see how much light was in that area, and there was hardly any at all. And then where you're building the new house at, I didn't see any light projected in that area.
So if they looked out their window, of course, they'd see the court lit, but they wouldn't see the direct light?
No, they would not.
Interface.
Well, what are we gonna do, regardless of the time that is decided upon, will there be any runover? If we say that the lights are done at ten?
They're done.
They're done.
That's correct.
So it's not, I have to finish my game or things of this nature, then the lights are done?
No, it's got a, it's got a set time that it shuts off, and that's it.
Because?
Yeah, we're working on the, uh, equipment for the reset. Basically, if the game is playing, and let's say the lights are about to go out, you'll see a warning light that'll come on, and you can push the button, but let's say it's, you know, at nine-thirty and that warning light comes on, if you push that button, then you have the lights set at ten o'clock to go off, they're going out. You can't go any further than that.
And when you push the button, how long do they stay lit?
Well, if you pushed it...
I know we can adjust that.
If you did it like nine-thirty, and you had it set at ten o'clock, they would go out.
So, well, no, I guess what I'm asking is, say it was set till eleven, and I hit the button at nine, it would stay on for?
An hour.
Thirty minutes, an hour?
Whatever you want to set it at.
Okay, so we need to make that decision.
You can set it, you know, you can set it to warn you at ten o'clock, you go over and you hit it, and if you got it set to go out at eleven, it's going out at eleven.
That way, if somebody plays at nine and then leaves, they're done. It doesn't just stay on until eleven o'clock.
You know, the tennis courts are set up that way.
They're an hour.
You get a warning. Yeah, it depends, you can set that timeframe for whatever you want it to be.
So, um, sorry, you've done, yeah. I think the only thing to add to that is that there's minimal impact when you check also to one-thirty.
That's correct.
There's no impact there as well.
That's correct.
Okay. Councilmember Ward?
Yeah, um, for me, I mean, regardless of the time, I think that it should be, um, equal among, among the parks. Um, you know, we have lights, it's an amenity for everyone who wants to enjoy them. Um, if, if there's no other discussion, I'll make a motion that we, um, approve ordinance 2023-01 amending the town code to have the Stevenson Decatur Park lights and the Dr. William Henry Park lights after sunset up to eleven PM.
So I have a motion, seconded. And the second, to approve ordinance 2023-01's amendments to set the lighting for the tennis courts and the basketball courts to both be eleven o'clock PM. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I do just wanna clarify how that...
In favor?
Sorry, how that language will, will read then.
Okay, let me just summarize, and then we'll summarize the language. The, uh, vote was four members in favor and one council member. Councilmember Nichols is absent, and the motion passes. Councilman Sherry?
So the way that that language then would read in Section 22-48, number one, the phrase we'll say, beginning with after sunset, will read after sunset up to the hour of eleven PM. The words "including" are removed because that would actually imply it would be from eleven to midnight.
Mm-hmm.
So, so that will read up to and including the hour of eleven PM. Uh, the next phrase will not change after the hour of eleven, and then, of course, eleven PM will be added to the basketball court time. So I'll actually have to redo this prior to...
I'm crazy, guys, yeah?
Yes, just because there are people watching?
Yep, Tony Lee, uh, Bay Street.
Thank you.
Might it be more, uh, correct, to make it just say all our parks? So that it's not specified, so the next park we get, the next park we get, we have to just amend this and keep amending it? If there's lighting at a park, we add this, and it's just a?
It's just a fourth of, yeah.
Well, since we don't have lights in any other park, we don't want people at, at Heron Park at, up to eleven PM.
Or at Burbidge Park, for that matter. There's no lighting there as well. Are, are you saying, David Gaskell, you're talking about, like, if there was security lighting, somebody could imply that the parks open until eleven?
Yes. So I, I think we should leave it as is, and, and if we wanna get lights at Heron Park or one of...
Burbidge Park? Burbidge Park.
Burbidge Park, we can, we can deal with that when the time comes.
Thank you for that. Any other comments from staff or anything?
I think, I mean, well, let me just, for everyone listening out there, I mean, let us, let us know, you know, if it's, you know, how it's going.
Call the police department.
Call the police department.
Yeah, there's a challenge.
With any type of concern that you may have.
All right, up next is Agenda Item Number Three, which is the Heron Park Negotiation Period Extension Agreement, and our town attorney, David Gaskell, is gonna run point on this.
Yes, uh, back in, back in June, we entered into an exclusive negotiating privilege agreement with Coastal Ventures Properties LLC, which is affiliated with Palmer Gillis, and that, uh, agreement lasted for six months, and obviously, uh, it has expired, and there are still ongoing negotiations between the town and Coastal Ventures Properties LLC. So I, I thought it was appropriate that we extend this agreement another six months to see that process through.
Thank you. And, uh, Palmer Gillis, the president of Coastal Ventures Properties, has indicated that he would like to also extend that, uh, for the duration of a hundred and eighty days. So we are looking for action by the Council this evening.
I just have a question, you know, Councilmember Nurr, myself, everyone, we've worked out into the Mayor and, and Palmer Gillis and Mary are on the subcommittee for this. Um, can, can we do ninety days? Um, I, I really feel like another six months is just another six months to, to drag it on, for lack of a better term. Is it possible to do ninety days? And then if it...
If the Council wants to do it ninety days, it can.
The, the only thing I would say is that if we can complete the work in ninety days, that's good, but if we have to do another extension, it's better to have the hundred and eighty day timeframe than to come back for another bite. We, you're, I think we provided the group with somewhat of a summary at our last, I think Councilmember Green, you had asked for a summary. Um, we, we did the best that we could with summarizing the negotiations for the parks that can be public during that time. Uh, as you indicated, uh, Councilmember Oris, you, Councilmember Nurr, myself, the town attorney, town administrator, are part of that subcommittee group. Um, and I think the Council has been briefed on some levels with, uh, with memos as to where our agreement stands or, or negotiation stand. Um, I, I think it's prudent to do the hundred and eighty days, because we do have a little bit of work to still accomplish. It's not just, um, it's not just working through some of the items that we have on our most recent agenda, it's also, David Gaskell, you can help me if I'm incorrect, there are some things contractually that would have to be worked out as well.
That's correct.
So just a quick question for Dave. Um, aside from laying out the road bed on the site plan and whatnot, what is impeding the development of a contract at this point?
Well, at, at this point, that needs to be done, and we may, we're likely going to have to have, uh, some more survey work, because the, as, as it stands right now, the town is intending to keep part of the property.
Correct.
And the meets and bounds of what is being kept needs to be laid out.
I think that a hundred and eighty days is prudent. I, I think that we can probably wrap up our work within that hundred and eighty day timeframe, but I think ninety days would cut it too short. But it's, I'm, it's open to this group.
If we can't do ninety days, we can extend it, correct?
Well, yes, but, uh, the president of Coastal Ventures Properties is also in agreement with a hundred and eighty day term, so...
And, and you can extend it to a hundred and eighty, but if you can complete it in ninety, then you're done.
And then again, it doesn't have to be extended.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not getting where Councilmember Oris is coming from, it's thinking it's just about, um, we all work better under deadlines and having an idea of timeline, but, um, I don't really appreciate the suggestion, but I'm okay with moving forward with it as is. Um, I think we are just probably all ready to get rolling, you know, on this as soon as we can. Um, but I will make the motion to go ahead and approve the exclusive negotiating privilege agreement for a hundred and eighty days.
Second. So I have a motion by Councilmember Green and a second by Councilmember Oris to approve the exclusive, exclusive negotiating privilege agreement, uh, for a term of a hundred and eighty days. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect that the vote was three to one, with one council member absent, and Councilmember Burrell was opposed. All right. Let's see. Up next is Agenda Item Number Four, which is community center fundraising. Uh, I'm gonna run point on this, as well as our finance director Natalie Slay and our public works director Jimmy Charles. So we've been working, this body has been working diligently to help combine the parcels on Flower Street that used to encompass the Flower Street School, uh, and currently encompasses the, um, the multipurpose building, which is in repair, and the, uh, the buildings that encompass Shoreup. So as we're moving forward with the subcommittee group to, to get the community center ball rolling, um, we're also trying to raise some money. It'll be not nearly enough to cover what we have to do, but it is a nice effort toward what we're trying to accomplish, uh, to raise some funds to help offset some of the development costs and planning costs associated with that. So, uh, with that being said, the Council previously approved the creation of a town flag. We don't have that flying anywhere. We would like to get the town flag flying and, and purchase some of those, uh, as well as to, uh, tack on a little bit of a donation fee associated with anybody that would like to purchase a flag. Um, we are gonna lean on some, some expertise in this body as it relates to maybe vendors that may be worthwhile pursuing for a flag. Um, I don't really have a whole lot of experience creating those, but we do have some expertise here on this Council. Um, and then, uh, we're also in the process, and I wanna give a shout out to Jimmy Charles and this group with Public Works, that all the street signs that you see throughout town are changing over to a standard height and dimension. Um, with that being said, the old street signs are coming down. Jimmy's been approached, as well as I have, about folks wanting to purchase some street signs that have come down that may have some significance to them. So we've discussed the idea of either doing like an auction or, uh, setting a fixed price for purchasing those street signs, and that money would then turn over as a fundraiser to the, to the community center. So this is, this should have been labeled a discussion item, but it is a community center fundraising item. Uh, the reason that Finance Director is on here is because she's gonna have to manage all the money that comes in and make sure that it is associated with the said, um, purpose defined, and not as for the community center development.
So, Mayor, I have a couple questions.
Go ahead, yeah.
Um, did I hear you correctly that your, your idea is to sell the town flag to fundraisers?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, has the community center committee met?
No, they have not.
So is there any plan? I mean, before, my work on the museum and, and fundraising, it's kind of, I, we have found that it's good to know what people are actually contributing or donating to. So perhaps we should have that group meet, or some group meet, to have some sort of idea of what, what people could be donating to. Uh, I'm also not sure, I don't know, maybe Gaskell can help, should the town itself be the one fundraising for this?
Okay, so let's tackle Agenda, or question number one, which was the meeting. We tried to get a meeting with the group following the approval of the committee. Uh, that was just before the holidays, that didn't materialize with getting everybody together. Uh, we do have one, you know the date all the time? Uh, is it fifth to twenty-fifth? Okay, so this one, we do have our first meeting of the community center group. Um, with that being said, one of the topics we'll be moving forward with, some of the items that we have, keep in mind, this group has met previously, it is the same group that has been meeting since the very beginning, and one of the items was moving forward with some survey work from the community to gauge what type of things people would like to see, and then there's, of course, gonna be the, the site plan work and the, the drawings that would have to be done for a community center. So those things are, are set by the committee, we had already discussed those things. Uh, this fundraising item that's a discussion item is not preempting anything that the group may talk about, it's merely getting us on a framework for being able to say, hey, this pool of money exists. We know that there's money available in the community center fund, but this would, this would assist. It's not gonna be a huge fundraiser, I'm sure, but I think that it would have some financial impact.
So you keep saying, oh, you're, so this is just a, you're not asking for action tonight?
No, it's a, it's a, it should have said discussion item in front of it, which it didn't, but that's why I preempted the discussion by saying it's a discussion.
Well, we are discussing. And I'm just, I'm saying, right now, I do have a little bit of concerns, but I'm very curious to see what this group comes up with.
Tell me what your...
Well, I, I mean, well, we're fundraising for something for the community center overall, but what, what is that? I mean, I, I think that, um, when, right now, we're at the point where it's, we, we know that we have a, a, a bucket, for lack of a better term, of funds for...
But that's why I preempted the discussion by saying it's a discussion.
Well, we are discussing. And I'm just, I'm saying right now, I do have a little bit of concerns. But I'm very curious to see what this group comes up with.
Tell me what your concern is.
Well, I mean, well, we're fundraising for something for the community center overall, but what is that? I mean, I, I think that when, right now, we're at the point where it's, we know that we have a bucket, for lack of a better term, of funds for a community center. We have this committee that's formed, that's going to meet in two days for the second time, it sounds like.
No, we've got multiple.
Multiple.
I don't know exactly how many.
Sorry, sorry, pardon.
For over a year.
Okay. I think that's just my concern is, now knowing that it's really a discussion item, I just wanted to put that out there. Selling the town flag for a fundraising, okay. But that was it. I mean, it's just, it's discussion, I'm just discussing.
So your concern is, is selling the town flag?
Well, my concern right now is asking for fundraising without a, without a, without a plan. I mean, I don't know what.
This body already, I mean, we had discussed, I think with the exception of Councilmember Green.
So if I buy a flag for 70 funds or whatever?
I don't know what the dollar figure would be, but.
Okay, that's just going to go to the pot of community center funds.
You would have the cost of the flag that it would actually take to make the flag, whatever that cost per unit is, would be subtracted from the price you pay, and the residual would be your donation. And.
I need to hear what you all have to comment.
And then the, the other thing is that the, we had previously, I think it was in FY, it's been two fiscal years ago, so I want to say FY '21, when we discussed feasibility study and survey work. That was in excess of $10,000, I believe. Might have been even more than that. So we know that there's a cost associated with it. So I don't think that moving forward with something like this, if that's the recommendation or the discussion leads to that, that it would be without us knowing that costs do exist.
And the second question?
I forgot what that was.
The second question was directed to David, I think it was, can the town, can the town do this?
Yeah, I mean, should it be?
I don't see why not.
So it would be the town of Berlin is fundraising for it? Okay.
We own the property and the community center.
But I'm just wondering, could it be like the, I don't know, another entity like the committee?
Yeah, can I follow up? So after you and I had a conversation this afternoon, I thought, you know, selling the flag was a good idea. But then I recalled an issue in Ocean City. Ocean City currently sells their flag, but they sell it at cost. And when I inquired as to why, because we also sell Ocean City flag in the store, they said they could not sell flags or anything for profit because they're municipality. So is that correct? And how do you get around that?
And we discussed that. I think Natalie should send that one.
Well, I just want to clarify, I'm not a specialist on fundraising. So we need to do a little bit more research. From what I know is we have to have a specific program dedicated to community and the benefits. So we cannot ultimately say we're going to fundraise and build a building. We have to run a program. So there is a legwork that needs to be done before we actually start fundraising. It should be a program and a purpose, and it should be a benefit outline. Selling the flags for elevated price, I cannot answer you right now. But from what I know in the past, we're not supposed to make profits and assign that work to the specific thing. For fundraising in the future, if you would like to run a program and accept donations and set them aside, I'm going to see a problem with that. With the street signs, if you sell them at auction, the cost of the sign, you have to apply it to the cost of the purchased new sign. So I don't think there is a profit that we cannot, there per se. The flags, I guess we just need to do a little bit more research. But to the point of Councilman Oris, we do have to have a plan laid out first before we go into the fundraising.
But I wish, I, I think, I think that the intent is absolutely genuine and, and worthy. However, if, if the rules would prevent us from doing it, we have to abide by the rules. But, but I think it was a pretty good idea and a pretty good call.
Well, and I don't think we have to scrap it because I think Natalie and I have been talking about this as well. It does have to have a defined purpose. It does have to have a defined plan. We can define that, but, and there is demand. People want the flags and people want the signs. So we got to figure out what that plan looks like.
Suppose you were to license it through We Heart Berlin, let them make the sales and then they make their donations to town.
There are all things that we can consider. That's why it's a discussion. I mean, I mean, we'd be open to different possibilities, but I think there's demand for the street signs. There's demand for the flags, and there's the ability to divert that funding to the community center. So if this body is still interested in that type of a process, we can explore those different options.
I really would like for us to explore.
Yeah, totally. I just, I'm glad it's a discussion. I have the impression that you wanted some sort of action, but.
I'd like to know a general direction.
I just want to make sure that we have, you know, a plan and thank you and catch our nipples for getting on that subject. But yeah.
So I have a question there. I want to spell flag and sign.
So do I.
I want to arrest that. I'm going to sell it to Steve for a hundred dollars.
So, but definitely have some experience in fundraising. Would this be, the community center be run by a association? The community center be, you know, by a nonprofit association? That's already set up?
So that, if you recall the group, right, we structured that in a way that to Councilmember Murray's point, there is a nonprofit that exists on that board, and they could do the fundraising.
And left town, as it should.
Well, it's still part of that group, right? They just may spearhead battles of their own.
Yeah, you're kind of just see.
What's that? I'm not sure the BCIA is a registered flag before the seat.
We would have to explore that, but I think that would.
Sure. Because you have them take these programs that are fleshed out yet to foundations, like the Humphrey Foundation, which is what we listed in my church. And that's where the dollars, truly big dollars come. I mean, I think the flag, that's fundraising, town raising, you know, we all love that. So I think it's a great concept as well, but that's, yeah, I mean, it sounds like we're going in that direction anyway, but, because I definitely, which I was mentioning, I was just going to say the same thing about the town to remember that situation. You know, they have their benches that they sell, the boardwalk as well. Same, similar sort of predicament that they're going to achieve, so.
We have a similar program.
Well, two, two points actually. I would think that this could be not dissimilar to the museum. The town owns the property and the building, but the Heritage Foundation owns the museum and does the fundraising and that sort of thing. So I would think the relationship must actually be established. The program that the parks have for benches, trees, flowers, we did build in an additional cost, but it's specified that it goes to future maintenance. So if we were to have someone step forward and claim a, buy a tree for a loved one or something like that, whatever goes over the cost of the actual tree would be maintenance cost. So it's not just profit, so to speak, coming to the town. It's actually with the intent of providing future maintenance. Is the town logo registered?
I don't think so. I think we have discussed that maybe with Ivy and Economic Development, the idea of maybe wanting to license or copyright, if I'm mistaken, I could be wrong. But I think we had discussed that idea of whether we license it, whether we don't license it. We never arrived at a clear plan, so I don't know.
Well, the importance of trademarking the town seal is that the town of Berlin would be the only ones able to use that seal on any type of items specifically for sale or for donation purposes. So you've got a store who wants to sell Berlin shirts. If the, if the seal isn't trademarked, they could put the seal on anything they wanted to and sell it, and we would have no recourse.
Do you want to look in conjunction with maybe our town attorney as to what other municipalities do and what our best practice should be? Good idea?
I'm so pretty, you love that stuff now.
Harrison, Biddy Ward, Harrison.
Harrison, that one, apparently.
All right, so if there's no other discussion, we'll circle back on this with a plan. But it's nice to see that at least we're thinking in the same direction as far as maybe diverting that funding through some mechanism toward the community center. All right. The, while I'm on the topic, I've thought about this as well. It's not on here. And some of you may have some experience with this, and the fire company does, so we might chime them in as well. What's the process on like a license plate? Is there, does anybody have any experience on that? I know you guys do, David Fitzgerald?
For an organizational license plate, you just make the application to Water Vehicle Administration. It's got to be a bona fide organization, and there is a minimum number. I don't recall if that's 15 or what that is. But there's a minimum number, and then somebody has to be your tag coordinator who's responsible to sign off that the person applying for the tag is a bona fide member. They also have to maintain that list. So if somebody leaves that organization, there is a, and she's familiar with this, a flag put on in the MVA system. So when they go to renew, they cannot renew that tag because they don't remember that organization. A process, not, not hard to deal with.
But that's like a fundraising source as well for you all, correct?
It is not a fundraising source because the tag, you're paying the Water Vehicle Minister.
Oh, so it just, it's revenue neutral?
There's no charge. It doesn't have anything to do with the fire company. Revenue is strictly for recognition.
Okay. I thought it was a fundraising task. Thank you for that. All right. Well, that's a nice little segue into Agenda Item Number Five. You guys want to come on up front? So we have the Berlin Fire Company and Berlin Fire Company EMS Quarterly Report. We have President David Fitzgerald and Chief RJ, with an S, although I did see that your brother got, what was it, Supervisor of the Year?
Yeah.
Oh, he said congratulations.
Thank you.
I will.
All right, so let's move on to the quarterly reports. Thank you all for joining us. Good evenings.
Oh, sorry. I'm going to retrain you on the click.
All right, the chief starts with the operations report for the fire company, and then I'll do the admin report. October 1st to December 31st, I had a total of 39 in-town calls and 51 out-of-town calls. So a little bit more than half. The calls were down a little bit from last year's total, around that timeframe, for that timeframe, I should say. Busiest days, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, followed by Thursdays. Morning time, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. are the busiest, followed up by the 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. Eight different times, we had more than one incident, fire rescue incident going on at the same time. We had multiple operators going multiple directions. And currently, we're holding with our average response time of 4.05 minutes. And again, the county standard is within six minutes, so.
So our revenue budget highlights ending with the second quarter. Our year donations, that's the mail that goes out in July. There's a total of 37, $30,071. We're down about 1,100 hours. There may be a few more of these come in as people go to get their taxes done, and their accountant may advise them that they can still, within the window of wherever the tax rules are, donate, write it off their 2022 taxes. The fundraisers, $1,002 for the free dinners that we did. We did make a business decision to sustain these for now. The food costs are getting extremely high. The product, especially the chicken, is getting very hard to come by. We almost had a panic one time where we advertised the fried chicken dinner, and then when I called to go pick it up, it wasn't available, and I just could go pretty quickly to find something. So that would be a disaster. So due to the economic and the volunteer staffing, we're going to sustain those for now until the economy does something. Invoicing, that's the invoicing the fire calls only, nothing to do with EMS. We collected 3,100 hours to the end of the year. All our town funds are received and half of our county funds are received. The expense budget highlights, utilities slightly over. We have the new increases on the town bills, the capital fees. Those weren't budgeted because we know those back to last April, those ended after that. So that's going to run our utilities slightly over every month. We had a few unexpected building repairs. Our dryer, it drives the clothes and not the fire gear, but the clothes and the towels we use to wash the vehicles with and things like that, that went up. And then we just had a heat, heat circulator motor go up in one of our engine bays. Vehicle fuel, we are proud to say we did budget pretty good for that, so we're at the expected budget. We did increase that, and everybody knows what the fuel costs are. Right now, we're at the expected budget maintenance for vehicles. However, just talked to our chief engineer, we've got upcoming tire replacements. These mandates, all of our tires have to be replaced on an emergency vehicle every seven years. So it doesn't matter about the mileage of the vehicle, doesn't matter if it tread, doesn't matter if it still has those little rubber things that show on the side as a brand-new tire, seven years of age because of the age of tire and needs to be replaced because of the speeds that we drive and the importance of that vehicle. So we did have quite a few vehicles that are due this year, and we've got a few vehicles that did their annual pump test that need some adjustments and work. Stores are ours that the volunteers have donated to the community. The emergency response hours, about 688, over 688 hours, and almost 1,060 hours of trainings, meetings. There's a few fundraisers that we talked about. Collateral duties that come up for the Christmas parade, other things that we're asked to do. For example, the things this weekend, they were asked to assist at the funeral of our child. So quite a bit, that's where the taxpayers get the bang for their buck, is all these hours that are donated by members of our community, in and out of town members. Capital items, breathing apparatus, pardon, breathing apparatus, because we've discussed before, you have reserved some ARPA funds for fire capital. Our grant, we are using the American Fire Grant, Assistant for Fire, AFT grant to try to fund these. So we're renewing our application. They ran out of money in 2022, so now we're pushing over to the 2023 application. We're all in that process. I've done the video, everything. So we'll just, we just take that data, move it over. We're very fortunate, which I think I shared in the email, that we have a gentleman in Maryland that is actually on the FEMA committee. Of course, due to conflict interest, he cannot review any Maryland applications, but that is a good insight information. So once he completes his class, which will be in the next couple of weeks, he'll review our application because we'll have inside information of anything that we put in there, wording wise, that will help or not help. But there are, it is very, very competitive, very competitive. And so some of the things, like apparatus, it will probably be virtually impossible for us to ever get an apparatus. You're talking about, this is across the country. You have companies that have 40-year-old trucks. They're still running 1970 trucks in the Midwest. We are not going to beat out that company. Most of the time, for the trucks, you've got to have an average age of over 20 years to even be considered. We still apply because it doesn't take long to do the application, because we have all the information from our equipment application. So we still apply, but we're very honest with ourselves that that's not our priority in the FEMA standards. Our other capital items that we're working on, the chief's working on is ropes and hydraulic equipment, getting that schedule updated, and we'll provide you, as we talk into much time, and update the schedule. And we do have some available American Rescue funds that we're going to be using from the county to take care of the smaller items.
Now, before we go too far, I want to pull in our Finance Director, Natalie Slay. The timeline for when those ARPA funds need to be designated, isn't that 2024? And they have to be expended by the end of 2026, I believe. So just keep those deadlines in mind that I know that you're reapplying, but we can only do that for so long. With that being said, on slide number four, you have your busiest days and busiest times of day. Are those consistent with the last quarterly report, or have they changed?
Sometimes I feel like it's a roll of the dice, you know? There's no real rhyme or reason or pattern for it. It's just how the calls are averaged out. I mean, no, it's, there's not a.
The topic here was, was he indicated in his last report as being one of the busiest days?
Yeah, but like the chief said, it changes. I'm the one that gets the reports from an island center of government. And then we have a different software system that comes up with the same answers. And it's just, you can do it year to year. It's just, it depends on, I think it depends on weather, depends on events, depends on quarters of the. Depends on months, depends on quarters of the year. What activities were going on and the times as well. They'll jump around. And no relative comparison. What I find is sometimes there's no relative comparison to the EMS. The fire is busier on one day than the EMS is on another day.
So Dave, I just have a few quick questions. You said your report here, a majority of your calls are out of town limits. Is that correct for fire?
For fire, it usually runs, we're pretty consistent with what we try to tell people is a 60-40 split for fire over the years. 60 out of town and 40 in town. And it varies, like you see here, it's 56 and 43.
Okay. And then you said you reported that eight times you were on a first call when a second call occurred. So what happens?
One of two things. We either split the crews that are available on scene to handle the second emergency or volunteers stand by at the firehouse. They'll go and they'll take another piece of apparatus to go handle the second call.
So what happens if one of these second calls, if you're out of town limits and that incident is out of town? Do you still split or does another?
We still split. If it's something that one piece can't handle or we don't have enough equipment to handle, then we'll call for other departments to respond and help us.
And then the matrix report that was, it's kind of the standard. Does that need to be reviewed or renewed after a certain time? I don't know when it was originally done, 2016.
We reference that document. I don't think the town or fire company needs to spend another $20,000 hours to update it. If you want updated stats, I think we're providing this to you every quarter. If it's something to update the stats, we can certainly work together and update the stats. The report, the written report, it is going to basically be the same. But if you have some updated comprehensive stats, we could look at working together and take some of those charts and update some of those charts.
Well, I was just asking because if it's, if that report is based on some sort of national data, in seven years now, I didn't know if it was going to be something that needed to be addressed.
I don't think that report was anything with national data. That was a report, the company came here and they surveyed things within the town. They surveyed the operations of the fire company and everything. It's specific to.
Yes, okay.
And I think on slide six, it's nice where you put the county response time standard to respond from station to six minutes. And then you put the matrix report cites nine minutes or less to respond. And then it has your benchmark, which is four minutes and I guess five seconds. Is that what that is?
4.05, seven seconds.
I'm not doing the math, but roughly slightly higher than four minutes to respond. So I think it's nice to see those things.
And you had referenced the grant that ran out of money. Who was that funder?
That's, that's AFG FEMA grant.
Assistance to firefighter grants.
If you need a letter of support from the town for that, let us know.
And then, I'm sorry, I have two more. The county fire meetings, are they restarted or are they upcoming?
Yeah, we just had one last week. We have them every month. We did stop for December just because holiday is hard to get a video on that. Thursday, that fell right on Christmas week.
Do you get minutes, copies of the minutes from that meeting?
We have, we have notes of the meetings and minutes to our committee. They're not minutes that go out to the public. It's not a quorum of the commissioners where it's a public disseminated of the minutes.
Okay. And lucky for you, Councilmember Dean, I forgot my last question.
My question is, do response time, that's from the main station?
That's, yes, that's time for us to get a piece of apparatus on the street.
From here?
Either from here or from the other station. If the fire engine from the main station here on Main Street's out on a call, go back to the eight cons or two emergencies, it may have been the fire engine from one of the other stations that responded to the second emergency. But it's overall average, just a hair of the four minutes.
I like 4.05 just now.
Yeah, I have a few questions, Dave. The county meetings that Councilmember Ores just referred to, are those open to the public?
They are, they are not. They're a working committee of the county commissioners. We don't have any public attention requests. It is a working group meeting.
Okay. And then the FEMA grant, one you applied to. When you applied, do you apply for a specific piece of equipment? Or do you list everything you're hoping for with a dollar amount? How does that work?
So they have a, they have the seminar artists that we go to. We used to go to them personally, they'll show us their video and we attend by video. They tell us what the priorities are. And then we hope that, so give me a good example. Health and safety is a high priority. And our SCBA, our self-regained breathing apparatus, fall in that high priority. So we don't do a, a carte blanche, just ask for 100 things. We try to ask for something that's going to give us the best chance to get the grant. So health and safety is, medical health and safety is number one priority with these grants. And the SCBA fits in that criteria perfectly.
You applied for that last year.
We applied for that last year. And the good thing is we got all the way to the very end. So that, what that tells us, talking to FEMA, do they have seminars about the turn downs, as they call them? We got all the way to the end. So that tells us that our grant application was strong. The computer didn't kick it out. And we got all the way to the end and it just ran out of money, is what happened. So that, that's a good thing. If we get a rejection notice in the first few months, that's an indication to us that grant application is not as strong as it could be because it didn't pass muster to get all the way to the end. And we were all the way to the end at the very last day. So that tells us we have a strong application.
Good, hopefully it'll come in portion this year. The fundraising, you said you cut off the fundraising for the food. And I can certainly understand who lost their way out. Have you talked about any other types of fundraising that you might engage in with your membership?
The membership is brainstorm. I can't rough top my head and think of anything specific. But we have talked about fundraising. I can take Casino Night, Can You Back Up Again? But with the local casino, we just, that's another thing. But yeah, we've talked about other things. I can't give you a specific, oh, sure, no, just rough top, I had that, but. But we do talk about fundraising. And we did put, and one of them was as you're suggested, put the additional papers in our donation drive, asking for some assistance there.
Okay. And I did want to mention donations. You said year to date, you raised 30K out of the mailer. And it was down from last year. And as I recall, a year ago, you were concerned that other organizations were soliciting in the 21811 area code. That did not happen this year. So what do you think's going on there?
So that's for the EMS. So we're still in the process of that. So we'll see how that flushes out after the next quarter. Because that just got mailed in November. That's the, referring to the Ocean City Paramedic Foundation.
Right.
Yes, so that's the, that's not the fire, that's the EMS. So we'll see in the next, because that will close out in January pretty much. We're already getting a few a day in now.
Because I asked the paramedic foundation not to solicit to anyone.
Thank you.
And they did. They said they did not.
So hopefully we'll see how that investigation turns out.
Okay, thank you.
I just got one more question. You talked about having a call equipment from other stations. At least, I take it, it was within these eight situations where we had two calls or something like that? How often has that happened?
Not sure I understand. Are you asking how often do, does the equipment respond from our other stations? Quite regularly. And it's not just out-of-town calls, it's in-town calls. It's quite regularly, the engines get out from our other stations and respond to our calls as well. I know a lot of incidents, it's not just one fire truck handles things. We, you know, car accidents, we park fire trucks at different intersections to keep the traffic in the intersection safe for everybody. It takes, you know, it takes a lot of different pieces. So, you know, it varies sometimes on how many people respond to other stations. But it is a, I mean, we're all responding to the same incident.
I will say that I have heard that engine out of Station Three charging up a lot for like landing zones and things of that nature. Even so, you're using the station.
Yeah.
It's good to see. Now, staying in the vein of fundraising from Councilmember Nerk, I just want to reiterate that if you're looking for fundraising options, it doesn't have a lot of overhead. We've suggested it in the past. It's always available to you. If you want to set up a tent at our events with just a simple boot drive, that's always an option. There's also the ability, if you wanted to do like blood pressure checks and have an AED there, I think there's a lot of value added to that. So just think about it. All right, you want to get into the medical report?
All right. We have a new EMS captain, Brian Shrubway, wasn't able to be here this evening. His part of the report, that's okay. In-town responses for EMS, 313, 63%. Out-of-town, 182. Total calls, 495. So slightly ahead of last year on EMS calls. The in-town transports, 245. And the non-transport, 68. So 78% of the calls that are in-town are being transported to the hospital and out-of-town, 97 transports and 85 non-transports. The busiest days that you asked a question about for the EMS, this was Fridays and then Thursday and Saturday was the same measure for second place, if you will. Busiest time today for EMS, 4:00 to 5:00 in the afternoon, followed by the preceding hour, 2:00, 3:00 in the afternoon. The response times, 1.07 minutes average, last year at 1.18. So this is again contributed to the additional staffing. Now, we have four people there. As you're about simultaneous calls, the second calls, we get out much faster. So we have, and that means life or death sometimes. So we have decreased our response times. Again, having the four people, none of those great. Matrix courses, 60 seconds for staff stations. So we're just slightly over that. But again, what may run us over is the third run calls. You know, that's volunteers coming. Those people on that third call, they've got to come from home unless they happen to be at the station. The revenue, so this helped maybe to answer your question, Councilmember Nerk. Inter dive is already $4,000 hours above last year. So I hope that answered your question. Just had to get to the right slide. So we have had an increase. It's not quite done. Like you said, through the month of January, we do get some people again who find the mailer, they're mailed, they're cleaning up after the holidays. Or they again, see their tax professional and they notice there's been no check written to the EMS. So that prompts them. We did put in the capital fund, mailer, the sheet. We've already got 300 hours so far up to December. So we'll see if any more comes in. But we did put that mail in and that highlighted the ambulance and the cardiac monitors. So far with invoices, we're seeing about a $3,000 increase compared to the same time last year. Some of that is, that's mainly due to call volume. We do have a new billing company. We know that'll take almost a year to get a handle on that. It's not going to be a short term to evaluate between the two billing companies. That's going to take a full cycle because of the way our call volume runs from summer to winter. So we'll be able to give up. But I can tell you, our new billing company is more aggressive. They do the appeals much better. So when I say appeal, the person gets a bill. And for whatever reason, the insurance company says they're not going to pay it. This company is more aggressive. You go back to the insurance company and ask them to take a second look at it. And we're seeing on some of those second looks, that computer or that person who does the second look is approving it. So we are pleased with our billing company's efforts on appeals. Expense highlights on fuel, we're slightly over. And the reason is, you saw our call volumes up. First two quarters, our call volume up. So we're slightly over with fuel. And same thing with office and computer supplies, especially our printing costs when we get those mailers printed. Plus, we added that second sheet of paper. You know, we didn't budget that. And then that idea came to us and we did that. So that's, we're over. But as you saw, we got 4,000 in additional value. We already have 300 in equipment. So hopefully we'll still come ahead. Just a reminder, on the capital fund summary, we have the ambulance replacements coming up. And these costs go upward. I saw, saw on a website today about the aluminum prices going up again. So all of the fire trucks and ambulance are made of aluminum. So when these prices go up, so we can expect probably another email from our vendors globally, not just Department of Fire, but globally, probably another cost increase. Cardiac monitors, we're working on grant funds of that and American Rescue Funds that the town has designated. So as we get a little closer and make sure we have all the funds, we'll send the letter up, request those funds. And then, you know, we still have the contingency funds for emergencies. And then our big thing for next year is the AED units. That's the automatic storage of liberators that are on average apparatus. And then there is a push, we are still investigating this, that they actually want, in addition to the cardiac monitors on the ambulances, there's a possibility they want AED units on the ambulance as well. So that's going to be, we're all hearing this, an unfunded state mandate if that comes down from the state EMS board. That's all in discussion. We do have representatives, we stay in touch. There's a hierarchy, a local council, a regional council, the state EMS council. And everybody's complaining about it because we have cardiac monitors on there, which will do an AED function. Why do we need another $3,000, $4,000 device on there? Because for us, that would be four times three would be $12,000 possibly. That we would have to come up with. That wouldn't be any pushing off. That would be mandated during our inspection to get that on there. You know, if they give you one year, two years, how long will it be to do that?
I think the argument from MMS on that, I believe, is that sometimes you have lay providers that may take the ambulance out on a call or something to meet somebody. And along the way, they could encounter someone in cardiac arrest.
Yeah, and we feel it can be resolved from talking to provide, a large group of providers. It can be resolved with training. The cardiac monitor has an AED function. So you just make sure you train all those people how to use the AED function on the cardiac monitor. It is intimidating if you look at one with all those buttons on the front. But you can make a little study guide, if you will, and do training with the basic providers. So that's the, that's the approach most providers in these presentations that I hear is if you want to mandate something, don't mandate the equipment. Mandatory training on the device.
Do you guys have training before you let somebody drive that piece of equipment as well, right? I did see that you're hiring for two providers. And they're EMT providers. Is there any impact on your ability to cover those shifts currently? What I'm asking is, are you covering the shifts with?
There's only one shift on January 31st. It's not covered as of now. I did the first two weeks of the schedule yesterday for February. And there's just a couple of holes. But they'll be filled by the time it comes around. But it is difficult because it puts a strain on our other providers. And, you know, we're losing people because of pay and benefits at other locations. I think everybody saw in the paper, Ocean City with their contract with all those cost of living's after 2027, I think. It's a agreement that's bigger than five years after 2027. So that's a historic agreement that you can go to work somewhere and know you're going to have in a written document, you're going to guarantee health, increasing health benefits, increasing retirement benefits and raises cost of living and bonus stipends for 2027. Nobody else in the county can do that.
Dave, I don't have a question about this. I do have a request, though. And I think it's within our agreement. In your next quarterly report, which will be, where are we, January? Your next quarterly report is going to be when?
Last week in April.
Will that be, and that'll cover what?
That'll cover January, February, March, up to March 31st.
Okay, so then your, your final quarterly report?
That'll be the last meeting in July, which will be for the fiscal year, April 30th.
So your report for that, at the end of the fiscal year, can you please add another column and give us the totals from the four quarters so that we can kind of compare those and see how it was over a whole year? These, don't get me wrong, these are informative and they're great, but they're only a quarter. And I don't exactly remember the last quarter's numbers. So if you could combine those into one, that would be appreciated.
I'll put them forward.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I also have a comment on the financial statements, the ones you submitted us for both fire company and the EMS. On the profit and loss statement, you list the revenue and the expenses. That's all great, but they're not netted out. There's no net income line. In many cases, an organization might have other income or other expenses, In many cases, an organization might have other income or other expenses, but it's auxiliary, none of that is showing, and I'm just curious.
All right, I'll ask Mr. Burden.
If we can make that happen.
You want a net number at the bottom?
Yeah, please.
How much time do you spend compiling Slide 4 in FIRE, and I'll tell you what they are, and Slide 5 in EMS, the busiest dates?
It's a report that comes out.
Okay, because I mean, if you're spending a lot of time, it's really, it's all over the place, there's really not much. Okay.
Just a report. Just a report that comes out of the computer. So that's Friday, the EMS busy day. December 16th, Friday, that was a pretty busy day for us, I guess, and police. How did that look for you guys? Just, I don't want to get in the weeds on this, but I know they occurred all within a couple hours, right, of each other. People were going to different hospitals.
And we had an event going on in Firehouse.
Oh, gotcha. So everybody was stretched and soon then. Did you need any outside help?
On the accident, I happened to be, ended up being the command driver of Route 50, so we had Ocean Park coming to us, to end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is the Town Administrator Report, Agenda Number Six.
I don't really have much this evening, kind of on the heels of talking about AEDs. One of the things the Parks Commission discussed at their last meeting was adding AEDs to Stephen Decatur and Henry Park. Henry Park has a perfect location on the side of the restroom. Stephen Decatur, a Tilly restroom is in place. They were talking about putting one on the pavilion, so that's something that they'll start looking into. It's a little bit of a consideration. AEDs by their very nature are accessible to anybody to get their hands on, so you run a risk of mischief, but it is something that they'll be looking into.
Thank you. Anything else? Let's move on to, well, any questions for our Town Administrator?
Actually, Marion, can you, I see that Dave Engelhardt is not here, but is there an update that you're aware of, or can you ask him, please, about the, a couple, it feels like a couple months ago, Ms. Deena Belong came to us about revamping the animal ordinance, I believe it was, and my impression was the council was anxious to hear about that, so I don't know where it is in the process. Would you mind following up?
I believe that it was discussed by the Planning Commission. I'm not positive about that. I may have my wires a little bit crossed, but I'll check with them.
I thought Dave sent us the summary, or no?
I believe that he did.
I thought he did.
Yeah, I do recall that. I mean, if it is something that the council is interested in moving forward, then you can certainly direct us as such.
I mean, I can't speak for everybody, but I think we were pretty interested in finding out what, at least they talked about, or how they felt the Planning Commission.
Well, I do recall that some of the implications would be enforcement. The county already has a number of provisions in place regarding animal control. This would not be something that, unless the town were to dedicate funds and forces to enforcement, it would kind of be, it would be put on the books with no way to really enforce it.
And when you say enforcement, I think the ones that were cited as examples had animal control units that were within those entities.
I'm doing this from memory, so.
I thought it was a case we were going to adopt the county's language.
Yes, because.
But if you adopt the county's language, you have to have the ability to enforce it.
Which means that we would have to have an animal control.
Or you just rely on the county.
No, because the enforcement on the county, that remains.
No, we can't put enforcement on the county.
Right now, you can, because we don't cover that.
Right.
We can call in for assistance, but the second that we adopt something, saying that it's going to be managed by us, we'd have to have a, or not a KAN, an animal control program. But I think the ones that you cited in this long were Salisbury and Worcester County.
Worcester County, also, and also the state of Maryland.
Yeah, so both, I can't speak for the state, but I know the city of Salisbury and Worcester County have animal control units.
Correct.
But if we go back, one, the Planning Commission meetings were all live streamed, so that discussion should be publicly available.
It was not, it was not discussed. It was discussed as to why I was there, and they thought it was actually you guys that were supposed to handle it. And then Dave clarified and said, no, the council put it forth. So I did all the research and gave him the example. I did a lot of copy and paste, and also clarified the codes, because even on the list, you name codes on your town website that either don't exist or have been repealed. So you're actually quoting a law, and you're using it as a reference to another law that is not even there anymore. And then we used to have fines. I mean, I know personally, because we got fined all the time, all the time.
So if you have those points that, I see our town attorney's face, if you have points that are referencing something that is no longer a law or that's been repealed, make sure he gets that.
Dave has the entire packet.
I'm saying, we'll make sure that Dave Engelhardt gets it.
No, Dave Engelhardt currently has it.
But if you have something like that, that's very important, but we'll also circle back with Dave Engelhardt, too many Daves, to figure out where that conversation is.
Well, just even in the dogways alone, if I can say this, just in the dog park, I mean, the county charges $100 per instance. You all lost $1,000 bucks today. I walked in the park, you know, and I saw another 500 on the sidewalk walking up here. It's like the Wild West out here with some of this stuff, and some of it is, you know, you have the right to not fine, give them a warning, just like in a speeding ticket, but you're losing income and you have no way of directing if there is an issue. Like what we had in our HOA, our HAO was forced to take it, take a stance because there was no laws on the books for us to refer to, and there was no laws for the police department to do anything. So we had to label a dog aggressive. We had to ban it from the neighborhood. That does not make for good neighbors, and we had no reference to go to because there's nothing on the town books.
State law actually covers it.
Covers it very well.
And when we actually enacted the county law. So if a dog is actually deemed to be dangerous after a bite of a person or another animal, all we do is ever cite the state law. The county does the exact same thing. What we try to do is let county do everything, because if you don't want to duplicate. So animal control will come in after we do a report, then we'll go ahead and ever cite the person, and advise them that the dog has to be quarantined, or other things have to be done with the dog. Sometimes actually take the dog for a period of time, definitely ever take, you know, tests for rabies and all those sort of things. So right now, the county law covers everything we don't. State law also is applicable. So again, deemed to be a dangerous deadly dog, have to be off the prop, he has to have a muzzle, certain things like that.
And those are all, just for clarification, that you and your agency or partnerships with other agencies can cover?
Dog bites are, these are number one health department, animal control ourselves. But again, I think she's talking about a whole list of other things other than the dog bite.
Yeah, there's other stuff that, there's no definition, there's no clarification, and even where the town says it refers to the county, it's, the language is horrible. It is absolutely horrible, and it's antiquated, and everybody else is up to date. We are like the few small towns that, we just say, "Up, it'll work," or we're not going to worry about it. And then it's a burden on Chief and his people, and it's a burden on us as residents with our dogs.
To be fair, though, it would continue to be a burden on the police department. Having the laws in place doesn't magically create, you know, adherence to those laws.
It does not, but if you have the ability and capability with listed fines like we used to have, you tend not to make the same mistake if you're passing over $100 each time you have it. And with the county, they actually increase it with each occurrence. So that's what I'm saying. The income that you would generate from any problems would probably help with the problem, with the time spent.
I think it's just something I'll ask administration to review and return.
Are you asking us to write an ordinance? I mean, that's what it comes down to at the end of the day, is do you want us to write an ordinance?
I mean, I don't know what, I wasn't at the, I don't know what has been discussed with Planning Commissioner Mr. Engelhardt and what is presented on behalf of this belong.
Why don't we get Dave to resend the email to the group, and maybe we can circle back to our next meeting?
Yeah, I think the genuine interest from this body, again, I'm not speaking for everybody, correct me if I'm wrong, was, we would like the Planning Commission to investigate this and work on it to bring it back to us. That's what I thought it was.
I think what we should do is maybe send, get Dave to resend the email to the group, and if it's unclear in some way, that way you can.
That's fine.
Yeah, he did send out a report following that.
Okay.
So I think it's important to review that, and then if we think that further action is needed, we can always discuss a pathway to that offline or at our next meeting. Any other questions for our Town Administrator? And thank you, Ms. Belong, for providing that information. All right, up next is our departmental reports, and we'll start with Economic Development Director Ivy Wells.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, happy new year.
Good evening.
It's been a while since I've been able to attend a meeting. I wanted to start out with by saying that February 11th, I didn't want to forget to say this, February 11th, we are offering free carriage rides downtown as the town's Valentine to everyone out there. They can come and line up at the intersection of Main Street and Pitt Street, and it's free Valentine's Day, or weekend carriage rides that day. Also, for the Jazz and, the Berlin Chamber of Commerce Jazz and Blues rain date, they decided to choose May 13th. Historically, Jazz and Blues Wine and Brews event has been rained out for the last several years, so they decided to choose a rain date this year for May 13th. We had our Arts Entertainment Quarterly Meeting this past week, and we are focusing on the artists that actually live in town and work in town to help let them know what their benefits are. There is a new arts grant that the Maryland State Arts Council is offering that we've sent out to the local artists that we know about, encouraging more local artists that live in Berlin and work in Berlin to let us know so we can keep them abreast of all the things that they are available, that, all the perks that they can have because we are an A and E district. One of the things that we are going to implement in the next few weeks is focusing on our local music scene also. I did a tour for the Frederick Arts several weeks ago, and they have a feature in their Arts Council, and I decided to implement that in our Welcome Center for local musicians. So we have a variety of local musicians who write and sell their own music in town, and we'd like to feature their music in the Berlin Welcome Center with a paragraph about them and a QR code so people can download their music and listen to it while they're in the Berlin Welcome Center. So that's one of the things that we're going to implement over the next several weeks. I've been very busy with the property owners and businesses moving and changing and working with the property owners and getting complementary businesses to come to town. As you know, there's four new restaurants that are going to open in 2023. Full-service restaurant at the Forgotten 50 Distillery, the Street Kitchen will open up where Broad Street Station was, Bratta Barney's is moving into the Globe, and Roadie Joe's Bar and Grill, I got you, Chief, Roadie Joe's. Bar and Grill is taking over where Crush and Crab was, so there's, you know, great improvements and really good for the town. Let's see. I wanted to also let you know that, is it, I've been appointed by Commissioner Fiore to the Worcester County Local Development Council for a four-year term that starts this year and ends in 2026, and I am going to be a grandma for the third time.
Any questions for our Economic and Community Development Director?
I have one question. Ivy, in the weekly report, you mentioned you were working on the new design for the merchant map?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so is this a piece you hand out at the center and?
So this particular merchant map is a Berlin Main Street initiative that, you know, obviously, my office is in the Welcome Center, so we hear what people want, and we know what they're looking for, and we need to redesign our map so it's user-friendly, walkable, and to let people know where the restaurants are, where local art is. On our current downtown map, we don't have where our murals are located, so we wanted to redesign that. After listening to some forums on the National Main Street Program, they gave some really incredible tips on the best practices to design a walkable map for downtown. So I met with a graphic design company, and they are going to rework the map for us. We have an audio history tour that people can listen to, and we don't have the QR code on that particular map. We have it on a separate brochure for the history, but I think it's interesting, you know, you see a lot of people sitting on the bench and, you know, while their partner's inside shopping, and it would be nice if they wanted to listen to some of the history of the town. One of the things I forgot to mention with the variety of grants that my department has received, beautification grants, so we will be adding additional benches and curb appeal flowerpots that the Beautification Committee is working on right now on William Street. William Street, we have, we've got Mandala Pies, and we've got 410 Social, and Mr. Parker even painted all of the utility equipment on the side of the wall to match the bricks, to make it look more attractive, and the Main Street Improver Grant will allow us to be able to add additional features on that, on that area.
Sure, the reason I mentioned the merchant map is one of the things we did at the Ocean City Development Corporation for their downtown map is we offered merchants an enhanced listing on the map, so they paid an extra $100, and they might have got an old listing with a little bit of information about their business, and I didn't know if that's something you could hear.
We offered that one year, and that's more of a Chamber of Commerce initiative for merchants. This is a downtown tourist map for tourist-style visitor destinations, not necessarily a merchant map.
So you're not identifying each of the merchants?
Well, we are, but specific merchants that are tourism-related.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for economic and community development?
Mayor, any questions from the floor?
Just name and street name, or if you're with the Parks Commission.
Yeah, Mike Wiley, Berlin, Water Cup Court. I volunteer in the visitor center a lot, and I let you know, people that come into this town are so impressed. We get a lot of people that tour historic towns up and down the East Coast, and I've heard more compliments about how well-run it is, how clean the town is and everything, and they just, they just can't get over it. And I mean, it's unbelievable. I've had John McCain's roommate from the Naval Academy in there, and he was so impressed with us, so it's, they're doing their job, I believe.
And thank you for the volunteer work and all of our volunteers.
It's very enjoyable to meet those people. It's really a nice program.
Thank you, Mike. Up next is our Electric Utility Director, Tim Lawrence.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd just like to also mention, I just got back from Thurmont, Maryland last week, and I was actually meeting with the Town Administrator, and one of his comments was about the town of Berlin, the downtown area, he wished Thurmont was as nice. It goes a long way.
Anyway, as far as my report, Jefferson Avenue, we installed a new transformer in service to feed a building that's being renovated on Jefferson. Henry Park, we installed a transformer in the underground service to serve the basketball court lighting project. Pennell Crossing North, that's going to be an ongoing project. That's the Town House Development. There's about six transformers that need to be installed in there, and about 2,000 feet of underground primary cable. So that'll be an ongoing project for a while, and hopefully the weather clears up and it's not so muddy in there. And also, Commerce Street Parking Lot, conduit was installed for the EV charging station. It's Jimmy, I'm sure, is going to talk about the parking lot renovations there. And then over at the power plant, we had to have the HVAC system replaced. It actually failed and faulted basically, so we had to have a new system installed there. And then also, up here at Sterling Tavern, we started the process of replacing the electrical panel. There was a temporary board there, and there's going to be a permanent panel. That should be done in the next week or so. This coming Thursday, we're going to start meter reading, so we'll be in people's yards starting on Thursday, and that'll last into Monday or Tuesday. And then also on Friday, the 27th, I've got to travel to Charlottesville, Virginia, to be present at the graduation of our first alignment apprentice in the program. This has been a four-year process. lineman apprentice in the program. This has been a four-year process, and I was actually informed that I have to give a speech about the employee, which I was like, oh, boy, great. So anyway, that's where I'll be going on Friday. So that's a great accomplishment for Caleb Hunter.
That's a huge accomplishment, and we are going to recognize him in one of our future meetings as well. And also with the permanent panel, just so that everybody's aware, that is for events.
That's correct.
And then, so that's everybody's throwing a towel. So we're finally getting that in. And then, were you in Thurmont for, I know you were giving some electrical coaching?
Yes. What was going on there over the past couple of months, I had been involved in the interview process for the new Electric Utility Director for the town of Thurmont, and I was asked by the city administrator and the new director if I would come up there for a couple of days and kind of help.
Watch them. They want to take them?
No, they already did. But they kind of asked if I would help just to get him started and, you know, get him started in the right direction, concerned in safety and engineering and things like that. And I think I was pretty helpful to them.
He did teach some safety courses to their employees, what, in the summer?
I did. I was there earlier during the summer. They were trying to figure out which direction they wanted to go, so I had to meet with the employees that they had and talk about safety. And they actually had one of their employees that was hurt pretty bad, and that kind of started the entire thing.
I mean, knowledge sharing, there are only five electric utilities that are municipally operated in the state.
That's correct.
So I think it's important, you know this, but the folks that are following along, I think it's important for them to know that knowledge sharing among that group is crucial. We do participate each year, starting what, now is our third year with the legislative calls and contractual services of Brett and his group. But with that, it's interesting, we were on the most recent call, and John brought up again the need for us to want to put that group together and solidify the five electric utilities. I know you've been crucial with your work from previously with Manassas.
That's correct.
To helping get that organization structured, but it's doing a lot of the things, it's formalizing the things that you're doing now and that Easton and other utilities are doing as well. So, thanks.
That's great. Thank you.
Any questions for our Electric Utility Director?
Just curious about the lighting at the court. When will that switch be flipped?
So, well, actually, to that point, it's 20 days, I think, for the ordinance. And did we get that part that we drafted? Yeah, we needed, so we will be letting everybody know, and it'll be public when we settle on the date to flip the switch together. But just so that you're aware, 20 days after the action, so 20 days after today, the ordinance goes into effect, and we are looking to get one part, I think, for the timer so that when you press the button, something happens.
Right. Right now, it can be turned on from 6:00 to 11:00, and it will stay on the entire time. And just to let you know, these are LED lights, so they use very little electricity. But they can operate right now if you want it from 6:00 to 9:00, 6:00 to 11:00, whatever you want it to be.
We'll give an idea of the lead time of the button.
Okay.
Because the last thing we want is people thinking that we're just going to keep them on all the time.
Right. I'm just waiting to hear back from them when this equipment's going to come.
So soon, Councilman.
Yeah, right.
All right. Any other questions for our Electric Utility Director? All right. Up next is our Chief of Police, Arnold Down.
Good evening, everyone. You have my written report. The highlight is both of our K-9 teams were certified this year. Jesse and Doc, they are, again, one of the very, very few bomb dogs on the shore, and Luke and Chris, they're in their 12th year. So with that said, we're actually, with age and the fact of marijuana being legal in some sense, it's time for Luke to retire, and we're actually looking at the next, this calendar year and his last certification. We are actually in the process of actually looking at alternative funds, start moving forward with another team. So that's going to be one of the highlights in the near future. We'll be discussing that. The other big project is we're working on a wellness program, mental health and wellness program. We're reviewing five different professionals to do four different jobs, to start with training, and then after that, a bi-annual assessment, if not annual assessment. We're actually trying to put a employee assistant program together and peer support in place. So there are a few things that have to be done, and we have a grant right now. We won't say it's a dollar amount, but we should be able to go ahead and take care of the program for a couple of years without any worries about funding. That is my report.
Thank you. Now, with respect to Luke, I know he's sometimes got a temper, but we would still like to have a retirement party for him when the time comes. He is a valued employee. We may have to be from a distance, but we'll still celebrate him.
He's mellow now. After 12 years, they mellow a little bit.
I was beside that car the other day. He was not mellow.
Does he have something on you?
What are you trying to say there, Mayor?
I just got back from J and M. I had a steak in my.
Good cover, good cover.
Any questions for our Chief of Police?
Chief, you had mentioned you're having some issues with drivers running the new light. Will you see some happening for the near future until people get educated about it?
Well, again, we're talking about cycles of individuals coming through. So the person going to Virginia Beach that's been doing it for 24 years, I think that might be happening. What's concerning us is a big John board that's saying that lights ahead, and the signs itself have two big flags. So, and we're surprised that we're actually having more people going through on A-18 than we, again, think about. So we're really, and I think everybody here, we're so grateful to the lights there. We know over a period, since I've been here, it's actually been five deaths there, and every accident we have there are all serious accidents. We never have a minor accident at that intersection. So, again, we're going to try to shoot out to the press a little bit and hope for a little bit more education, and other things, just time. But we did make a phone call to State Highway, and again, we're like this, what can we do? And I think we're almost there with that, but we're definitely going to do more enforcement. We've actually had officers sitting out there just watching, and they've seen a couple and just blow. So hopefully, I can say again, with time.
And there's a big flashing lights in Urban.
There's two. There's two notifications on either direction.
The members of the media might wonder about the hit-and-run collision to this evening. Was that their suspect in that? Or?
Not yet.
And the hit-and-run was to a telephone.
Collision, yeah.
Collision. You love that.
Yeah, it's collision.
Vampires, too.
Value vamp.
Value in the street size.
Better hide that silver pickup, Steve.
And Chief, just to your point, though, and it's something that this group has brought up multiple times, the deaths at the south end of Main Street and seriousness of the accidents are one thing, but we also have the same thing at the opposite end on Route 50. So we're cognizant of that as well.
Definitely. We're just blessed that we haven't had the deaths in serious accidents, no question.
We have had deaths, but.
Death. I don't think deaths. That number is like unbelievable there.
I'm taking care of some. The other thing is, is we do have, we did get a summary, and I asked for some clarification from the state delegation about the warrants for that intersection. So hopefully at our next meeting, we'll have a little bit more updated group on. All right. Anything else for our Chief of Police? Anything for our town attorney?
That's all.
All right. It's good to hear. Finance Director Natalie Slet.
I don't have much news except we're working on budget preparation, working with all the departments on the capital assets. By January 31st, I should be able to send you a draft from each department that we have been planning for fiscal '24.
Thank you. Any questions for our Finance Director?
Natalie, you mentioned the smart metering project into Tyler. How is that going to work?
Well, as of right now, we just receive an actual meters. Then we're going to go bidding for installation, and while that process goes, the provider of the meters is supposed to have the software in place that will be integrated with the Tyler. I don't have all the details, but that's going to be a step in between, or it's going to be incorporated. But we have a team formed up, representative from Tyler Software, our IT department, and us. So we're going to meet regularly once we go.
But the data from the meter flows right into the software, accounting software.
It's going to be a software provided by the meter provider. So the data will be stored in their software, and then it will be communicated to Tyler through import file into the billing.
It's my understanding that the meter software company and Tyler have worked together in the past, so.
That was a component that we had in.
Right. The Tyler is not the one going to read the information. The software is going to read it. Tyler will be the receiver.
But it's a huge time saver.
Oh, yes, absolutely. It's a manual labor involved.
And to that point, we're trying to do the same thing in electric, which is crucial because our readers, our reading ability is failing with the day. So they're going to be pen and paper, so. We hope not. I hope not either. All right. Up next is our Public Works Director, Jimmy Charles.
Good evening, Mayor Council.
Good evening.
The Public Works Sanitation Department is now hiring a CDL driver for, to work on our automated trucks in our sanitation division. If we know anybody, friends or family that are interested, please go to the, we post it on the newspapers and website, apply to the website. We've been utilizing our sweeper, and we went through and did most of the ADA yellow pads to town. We've been power washing, trying to get them clean, and just trying to keep that clean appearance for the town of Berlin. We collected over 100 trees on the first live tree pickup, and we collected about 90 on the second. They were all recycled to the goat farms. Thank you, Mayor, for helping getting the trees recycled.
Thank you to you guys. You did all our work.
One last one. And then Commerce Street, we dug out the whole area. Tim came in with an electric, made a stove conduit. We will be backfilling it in, and hopefully, possibly getting a concrete new sidewalk and curbs put in later this week or early next. So that project is moving on. We've talked about being able to have electric in that area. We might even be able to add some uplighting if that's what people want, or some sound if you want to play some music, even the Revans. We can maybe put some audio in there. But we'll have power in that area, so. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anything for our Public Works Director, Jimmy Charles?
So this is really actually Jimmy and Ivy. So I guess, like, Public Works is handling the infrastructure for Commerce area, and then your shop will take over the beautification.
Right. So included in the Main Street Improvement Grant, I've set aside funding for the Pocket Park at Commerce Street, for working with the Beautification Committee, for flowers, some hardscape, and a Reverend Tidley sign also.
And just for clarification, beautification is staff-based on by Public Works, just so you know.
Tell me about the renovation that's going on on Main Street. What's the progress? And explain to me, explain to me what has been done to ensure the safety of the folks using the sidewalk and the street.
So I talked with Samantha Peel-Stick last week, and if you notice, that they've erected a chain link fence now. So they've put up a chain link fence to keep that distance between pedestrians and the construction site. They've also combed off the parking area right around those buildings, but it's, I mean, they're in hazmat suits because of all the stuff they're finding. And it's like the movie E.T. where they're all in white hazmat suits.
Is that stuff airborne?
I do not know.
Once you move it, it is. I mean, it's the whole building. So we're talking about this and everything.
I don't know if hazmat suit is the best word. I think we should say maybe, yeah, they're in protective.
The general public looks at them. I look at them like, I feel like I'm in the movie E.T. at the end. I don't think there's any aliens in there, but you never know.
But you're supposed to put it in plywood, securing, and we're doing patrol checks just to make sure that no one's trying to get inside.
But I think they're doing well with their schedule due to the pleasant weather that we've been having. But we're working together on contingency plans in case that construction does move into the event season and farmer's market. So I do have a contingency plan in place for, we won't have any vendors or anything set up out there.
So as it stands out, we don't have an expectation of when this thing will be done?
She's hoping in six months.
Six months.
Wow.
The demo was supposed to be two months after they started, meaning that it shouldn't have an impact like it is on the roadway, parking spaces, and everything after two months, actually having everything done inside.
And ready to open. They'll be doing inside work.
Right. The entire project, six months, but like what Chief said.
For impact industry.
Correct.
They're actually supposed to be working on both sides of demo, and they were having up to 12 people inside at one time, and they're going to try to do something on William Street real quick just to get it done within that period of time.
So when does the two months end?
I don't know, but they actually have been working three weeks. It started the first year.
Right after the first year. They've pretty much, they've been working every day, I think.
Dean, they have added four-by-four columns along the front of the building. I would say there's probably 10 to 15 columns that they've added to reinforce the front of the building.
That's a two-state, wouldn't it be?
We're looking forward to the end result. I think it is going to be a big impact on the town and the frontage of the appearance.
I believe all the spaces, the retail spaces are taken, with the exception of one.
We are looking forward to the revitalization. Anything else for our Public Works Director? Okay, thank you. Our Human Resources Director, Kelsey Jen.
Good evening. First, I apologize for tardiness there. Natalie and I were in a meeting that may have been over a couple of minutes, but I wanted to let you guys know that we did, I onboarded two new employees this past two weeks. We also posted two new positions. One of those was the sanitation CDL driver and labor, and then we also posted a distribution and collection technician. That one's been vacant for a little bit, but we wanted to get through the holidays and stuff, and Jamie said he was ready to get that posted now. So that is posted. Ivy was great. She helped design some signs that just have a QR code that'll take you to our website, and 30-yard signs. We'll place them. We've got a couple for around town just to put out, and it'll take you right to our website for employment opportunities. So we figured that might, you know, get people thinking about it a little bit more. And then, as mentioned at the last meeting, I'll be attending the Job Fair at Salisbury University on February 23rd to talk about new positions. We have opened, the lead-up actuary study did come in, but we have a call scheduled tomorrow with Maryland City Retirement just to help interpret that study a little bit, because some of those reports are just, you know, pretty involved, so we need this date to.
There were lots of actuarials involved.
Yeah.
Good nighttime reading.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's, I think I have a good understanding of it. I put it into writing and emailed it over them. I just want them to confirm that I'm understanding what I'm understanding. So we'll have that call tomorrow at 11:00. And then, W2s have been distributed to employees. I have you all, I have all of yours here. I was hoping to put them up on the dice before you guys got in here, unless we're tied up in a meeting. And then, the PayPoint HR, the salary, the wage and compensation study that's underway, all employees have completed their own position vantage. All employees have completed their own position vantage point questionnaires. We got actually all of them submitted to them, so I assisted some employees in getting those sent over and I think we're all submitted. Now they're trying to put together some focus groups, some employees to be, and discuss kind of things that aren't related to pay. What are some other things that you think would improve morale? What are some other things you'd like to see in town and stuff like that? So I think those will be some good meetings. And then just been working on some urine, state and federal reporting that's required and just, I wanted to just take a minute too to thank Mike. I thought it was nice that he stood up and, you know, complimented the town, but I feel like we need to make sure we're always telling him thank you and all the other volunteers too, so just appreciate everything you do. But that's all I had, so.
Anything, any questions for our Human Resources Director Kelsey Johnson?
Do you feel that, or have they told you the vantage point folks that they're on schedule to what they projected?
They haven't said they're not, so I'm hoping that we are.
Everything seems to be progressing as they expect.
After the, I guess it was probably what, a week or two ago now, they sent out these studies to other organizations. So now we are waiting on responses from other municipalities, state agencies, you know, counties, stuff like that, so I think we're on track.
But they're not sitting idle in that process. Like Kelsey said, they're also reviewing the forms that staff have completed, which we've all seen a copy of what that form looks like. And then they're also working toward, like you said, the focus groups.
Yeah, and those are scheduled. They wanted them two back to back dates. I sent those dates to department heads. We have to determine how we're going to organize those focus groups, but they're going to be February 16th and 17th. So, yeah, we'll be trying to get as much involvement from staff as we can. I think it can only, you know, help everybody at the end, so hopefully, so.
Thank you.
So, yeah, don't leave right away because I have stuff to give you all.
If we can't leave either, figure away, we have.
Oh, right.
So you have us. Any other questions for our Human Resources Director?
Apparently, right, because I go up.
Up next is our Administrative Assistant Kate Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Kate? All right, thank you. That concludes the staff reports or departmental reports. Let's move on to the council, comments from the council, starting with our Vice President Dee Perrow.
I don't know.
Okay. Councilmember Nerr?
No report tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Ors?
I just have one thing. With the receipt of the LEOP study and the review on staff and through the state, I'd just like to follow up on the work session, put that on our radar as soon as, yeah, as soon as reasonable review and whatnot.
I think that you're going to see that probably as early as our next council. I mean, just because like we mentioned before, we are up against the time constraint, we just need to understand, as Kelsey mentioned, what the report means and what those fiscal impacts maybe.
It was quite, it was quite the.
There's no page of the report that says your fiscal impact will be this, and so we have to figure out.
Right, absolutely. I just.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, that's all. I can.
Councilmember Greer? Try to be brief. I just, I listened to the Planning Commission meeting last week and that's just something I was hoping that my colleagues would take a look at too, and Dave's not here. The topics that were brought up, and the Mayor, you asked the Planning Commission to take a look at what, you know, what this next strategic plan for growth would look like and the planning, planning comprehensive plan, you know, they had some really great conversation and Dave really chimed in a lot throughout it, you know, talking about things like commercial annexation along Route 50, east of Seahawk, speaker series, really TDRs, urban growth boundaries, green belts, and these are things I think that are, we're going to hopefully be discussing in the future. You know, there's money in the budget for these sorts of things, but I just didn't get a chance in the community too. That was a really nice casual conversation just about what they thought, members that were in attendance, so I just wanted to share that. And then just one other thing, I wanted to, something that wasn't sitting well with me from the last meeting, and I don't want to get too far out of my skis here, but, you know, the Mayor, you asked us for a look at our goals for 2023 at the end of the calendar year and, you know, I'm guessing that all of us probably had LEOPs on that list. I know it was on mine, you know, I looked, my top goal was that the town would continue to maintain services and exceed expectations when possible and, you know, public safety obviously is on that list. And I know that there is skepticism in the community about LEOPs and what this group is going to do moving forward. I just didn't want the communication, the conversations that we had last week about LEOPs and the LDC, I think those are very productive conversations. I think we had some disagreements over maybe the process that led up to last week's meeting before the LDC. I guess I just feel like, I don't want to speak for myself, but I believe that this group has expressed in their prior week when I was out there, you know, support for this. And as Chief has reminded us, you know, we have been at this juncture before, I haven't, but this, people that sat up here have. And, but I was also in July sat, sitting out there in that meeting, Tony, you were up there too, where the police officer's wife spoke. We had two former police officers that were in Berlin that spoke and I know I was watching the expressions up here. You guys heard all that, you know, and we learned about what it takes to have a police officer in this town, be successful and continue on through this, their careers here. The idea is not that it be a starting point and then to move on, certainly the idea is not for it to become somewhere where we invest in this, these officers to go through the required processes and then to move on elsewhere. You know, and so I think, you know, to me, LEOPs, that's what LEOPs is to me. I'm interested in what the LDC has to say, not really interested in the policy making that the LDC may have, but I believe it's an appropriate use of casino impact funds. You know, to me, the commitment is there. I want to do everything I can, you know, in my first budget to ensure that we follow through on that. I believe that the commitment is there. And I just have heard through some members of the community, why is LEOP so important? And I think, I know we've stated it in the past, but I guess I'm just going to reiterate. To me, it's about retaining, attracting and recruiting the best. Berlin should not be at a point where we are now, where we only have, where we're short. I know it's an evolving target, I'll say handful of officers. I know I'm getting tired of hearing about it and I guess the questions in the community while I think are valid, because it is going to come, we're looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars at a minimum, and I know we're getting, the translator will get back to us on what that dollar amount would be. And I do hope that we can use some of the casino impact funds for it, but also understand where the precedent is there. They like to see these dollars used for more bricks and mortar type of infrastructure, type of improvements, but also the public safety is in that general, it says public safety. And I do believe, you know, when we have our work session to discuss these allocations or what we're going to formally request in the multi-use, multi-year plan that they want, I'd like for us to consider, you know, somewhere where maybe we have a may of the minds philosophy where, because we are going to have to bite the bullet on this, and I believe we are and we're going to need to, you know, where we do a sort of diminished request, so if we have a multi-year plan, we ask for maybe, I'll just throw it out there for numbers, pick the number, two hundred thousand the first year, a hundred fifty thousand next year, seventy-five the third year, so that we can adjust internally with our budgets, you know, to make this happen. It just, I will say, I was bothered with some of the comments on what I believe is a misconception that last week's conversation, in any way, I'm not putting words in here here, it's a mouth, but that it was a, some sort of a backtracking on a commitment for LEOPs. And I guess that's where I just wanted to express myself today. With that, you know, actually I had a police supporter say somebody needs to make a statement to show that LEOPs is still front center. I feel like we've done that.
Yeah, we did that very clearly as a group. And I think that you, I don't want to speak for you per se, but I would say that LEOPs is a fundamental thing, you probably agree with.
Absolutely.
So I don't think even your nay vote was a nay against LEOPs. I think you had your reasons for the nay vote.
Against the process.
Which, whatever it may be, but. The thing is, is that LEOPs, it's very important and nobody can speak to it more than our officers in the fact that we're behind the times in benefits package when it comes to law enforcement officers. The fire company was here talking about Ocean City and their benefits packages. Well, that doesn't stop at fire and EMS. Police is just as defined.
Right.
And one of those things is that defined retirement benefit because of the nature of the work that they do. And it's being felt every day by our officers that are working double and, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, sometimes triple overtime to try and cover the shifts that we are down.
Right.
So we've hit that crux and this body has done a good job of, it's been a process, right? We've bolstered some of the things like shift differentials, like bringing our holiday pay in line, those things. And when I talk with the LDC, they understand, or at least we tried to explain that, that we're not asking them to absorb everything as it relates to recruitment and retention for our police officers. We're burdening some of that as well, which is not a burden per se, but we are shouldering some of that cost in the recruitment and retention side. That comes with the cost and we will feel that as we onboard the residual officers that we truly need. So I hear you and I.
Yeah, I'm not really looking for a back and forth, to tell you the truth. I'm just stating what I feel and, you know, that, yeah, I think we're all on the same page. I just, when it's questioned, I want to address it. And, you know, I grew up in this town, I've always taken public safety for granted, no offense. I think a lot of our citizens do that. We take it for granted because it's a safe place. That's all I really, and I just, if we have to invest in it, which we're going to and we need to, we should do it. I think, like I said, I take it for granted it's a safe town, but I raised my family here, I was raised here, and I'd just be stating really for my own conscience for the public to know that, you know, last week's, two weeks ago's conversation wasn't any sort of backtracking, even though I know that that has been done in the past, so that's all.
And it's also important that, like, I think it sent a big signal that we did come together on something that isn't a document, right? It's one thing to say, hey, look, we support it, but we came together also as a group to say, this is an initiative that we want to see funding for.
Right.
So I think that really helped and I think as the LDC meeting progressed, I think that meant a lot to the members of the LDC.
Yeah, I just think there was confusion when we had LDC members saying that the memo doesn't match up with the letter. That's what I guess I want.
That wasn't factual either.
Yeah, well, there's something, the minutia of that is not what I want. That's really what I want. I want all of these things that are taking place are distracting from the intent. And Jay called last week, I knew exactly where he was on that. You know, you made it very clear, you were supporting LEOPs before I was up here, so that's all, you know, really just, there's a lot of things that are out there because of different processes that are taking place that I know we all have a high level of.
And the ARCA growth plan, I think that's another good point that you brought up. And it's important to note that that conversation actually started with Planning Commission members approaching us saying, hey, look, we want something like this, we need something like that to help guide Berlin's growth and development into the future. So this idea started at the Planning Commission level, it was answered by the council allocating those funds in the ARCA plan, and now we're just at the point of figuring out that path forward. So, yeah, I think it was a great conversation, but this was something that was requested by.
Great.
Just, just to add, I think it is very important to, to understand that, that our support for LEOPs comes from the public, because you mentioned that a meeting where folks were here and stood up and expressed their support for LEOPs and, and for hiring and retaining staff. So, so, so not only do you have, do we have these individuals supporting LEOPs, but it is supported by, by our constituents and I think that is bigger than, than any of us individually.
Thank you. Anything else? Up next, your comments from the Mayor. I'll keep mine brief, but the, this is a busy time of year for a lot of us, especially the town of Berlin and our respective departments as we begin the legislative session in Annapolis. Our folks are up there working for us, but we're also paying attention to what's going on, what's being filed, what impacts the town. We have different subgroups that we meet with along the way to help make sure our legislative position is clear. So it's a busy time of year and we are following the stuff that's taking place. With respect to outside entities, this isn't mainly for the folks that are here, but mainly for those that are watching or may follow this at a later date. If there's something that impacts a local group and there is some letter of support that is needed, you hear us say that time and time again to certain entities, but that is something that we can consider as a, as a mayor council as well. So that's pretty much my comments and we'll open it up from comments to the public, from the public. Just name and street name.
Gene of Long 174, Trepid. You were talking about the flag to do as a fundraiser.
Yes.
I could, I bet you could bypass like a lot of the hoopla if you can make, does the community center have its own logo or its own kind of symbol?
No, but the, the request from the public is for a town flag, so we're trying to answer that request.
Well, what I'm saying is though, specifically for the fundraiser, if you, if the community center is going to have some kind of logo, you could bypass some of the stuff and make it a town logo with the community center's logo and that could be specifically for that fundraiser. That way you don't have to worry about anybody wondering about co-mealing or funds or whatever. It's specifically, and then you're advertising the community center on the top of it. So it's just an idea to throw out there. And then Tony actually did a thing about crosswalks in town and that, like a survey thing. Who do we talk to about an existing crosswalk in Lady Pass? The one for Buckingham, is it Buckingham Church Presbyterian that goes to the park? There's no crosswalk there that, and then that's where a lot of the kids, but also even, it sounds silly, but the cars are flying by the park lately and the police have been there to watch. And I'm wondering if like maybe a crosswalk would be something there, but the existing one in front of Buckingham, is, do you guys have a state contact to reach out to?
So what we did with the paving project that was done, we actually compiled with our Public Works Group a list of every point where you see an ADA pad, like what Jimmy rec touched on in his report, those yellow pads.
Oh, okay, that's what those are.
So those pads where there were connection points that already exist, we sent a list to the state and said we want to see those side, or crosswalks from one pad to another. So that's not being lost, but there was, the process of finishing this was that they had to, correct me if I'm wrong, Jimmy, they had to replace the things that were already there.
Okay.
This would be a new scope of work, so that has been sent to them. It'll be included in our consolidated transportation plan request, so.
Part of it though is, I don't know if you noticed, but the speed limit increases just before the elementary school to go out southbound. So you go from twenty-five to thirty right in front of the school crosswalk. And then you have the thirty mile coming from South Main going north and it comes right around that curb, which is filled with bushes. And the reason I mention it's me and my dog almost got hit crossing the road because someone, I don't think they were speeding because thirty actually seems pretty fast when you're in a car's way, but we were in the crosswalk, but there would have been no way they could have stopped in time. So I'm just wondering, is, should that be like something to bring up to the state? Like how ludicrous is it that you have a speed limit increase in front of a crosswalk for the elementary school and then you have Worcester County Prep right down the street? Like it doesn't make any sense that that's your thirty mile zone. It should all be a uniform, perhaps twenty-five, or they need to rethink like bushes or the way, you know, because you can't see coming around that corner.
I think Councilmember Nerr actually brought up the speed on Main Street a while ago. We had a state highway conducted a speed study here on Main Street.
I think it was primarily downtown, but.
Primarily in the downtown district and I think they found that the cars were all traveling, majority of them were below the twenty-five threshold in their report. But the thing that was very interesting, and I think it was interesting to all of us, is that the state actually says that the speed limit for a road like this would be thirty miles an hour in its entirety. We actually got the twenty-five mile an hour at, and Chief, you may know this more than I do, but.
Grandfathered.
Yeah, it was grandfathered in, so they would actually typically recommend thirty miles an hour.
Okay, so is there someone we can write? Like which, like would you suggest, like state highway? It's just ludicrous, even thirty mile speed limit change, increase right before the elementary crosswalk. Like that is the stupidest thing I've ever seen. And if you're going northbound, it comes right around the curb, you can't see anyone in the crosswalk until you're right on top of it. So who do we write? Like, tell me, I'll do the campaign, I don't care.
Senator.
Senator. I think, yeah, that would be a state level.
Yeah, so who is that? Okay.
Charles.
It just was the craziest thing. It just was the craziest thing I've ever seen.
The delegate would be Charles Otto and the senator would be Mary Peth Rosa.
Perfect. Thank you.
The, any other comments from the public?
Yes, Tony, Way Street. Just wondering when you, and is this Deruut Valley that's going to be coming, talking to us?
We, there would, depending on the threshold cost of the project, there may have to be an RFP. So there's no, no.
No definitive person or timeframe?
Well, there is a definitive timeframe because we have to extend that by what?
Twenty six.
Twenty twenty six, but we hope to do that before then.
Okay. Last question. Community Center Committee. Has that been established? What's the plan? What are we looking at for a timeframe there?
The committee was established by the mayor council. So just, it was in 2022. And the group, we tried to get a meeting together just for the holidays. I want to say it was November, December. That didn't materialize. So we have our meeting on Wednesday.
Then who is the committee?
So the committee, the group consists of BCIA members, Councilmember Burrell, Councilmember Nichols, myself. It has Shore Up membership.
For sure.
Yep. And it's mainly the group that started meeting early on, what, a year, maybe two years ago now?
Two years ago.
It solidifies that group as a formal committee.
Awesome.
And then I think you said Path Forward? Tony, did you ask?
I was just wondering what the Path Forward was and timeframe and that's.
Those meetings are open to the public. I mean, there's not any reason that they can't be viewed by the public. I don't think we're publishing minutes from that.
No, because it's not a quorum of council members, but they're certainly not closed meeting.
Yeah, it's, it's open. It'll be in the conference room.
Cool.
All right. Any other comments or questions from the public? Okay. Comments from the press? If not, Vice President Burrell, you're a juror. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's the record reflected. Most of the adjournments made by the Vice President Burrell.